कात्रुम कदलुम इवरुक्क किल्पडिगरदे
And Swat said that and wind and the sea obey him
इवर यारो
And who is this man?
कात्रुम कदलु, देव एसुक्क किल्पडिन्ददे
And so wind and sea obey him
ओरु देवुनुडय पिल्ले के सकलमु किल्पट्रिकवेन्दिदे अवश्यय
It is very essential for the people of God and everything should be subjected under him
इवन देवुनुक्क किल्पडिन्दाल, सकलमु अवनुक्क किल्पडिय
And if he obeys God and everything will obey him
अदु दान देवुनुडय तिट्टम
And that is the plan of God
एसुक्क किल्पडिन्ददु वनुक्क किल्पडियनो, अदु दान अवर मुन्मधिरयाहन नरंदु वन ओरु पादे
And the things that obeyed unto Jesus must obey you and that is a pattern that you found before us
वेदम एन्ना सोल्गरदे
What the Bible says
मार्क 1:27 अंग एन्ना सोल्यूरकरदे
And what it is said there
आविगलु इवरुक्क किल्पडिगरदे
Even the spirits obey him
अब्रतम बाइबिल सोल्गरदे
And that's what the Bible says
अप्पो आविगल एसुक्क किल्पडिन्दलाहे वेदम सोल्गरदे
The Bible says even the spirits obeyed him
अप्पो अदय आवि ओरु विश्वासीकी सीडनुक्क किल्पडिय आगवेन्दु
And the same spirit must obey to Jesus and his disciples
किल्पडिन्ददा इल्लया?
Did it obey or not?
लुका अर्थन सुविषेषम पत्तामतिकारतिल पार्कम्बड़दे
When we look unto Gospel to Saint Luke, chapter 10
पतिनेला वसनम एन्ना सोल्गरदे
What 17th verse says
आविगलु, पिशासुगलु, एंगलुक्क किल्पडिगरदे एन्ड्र अवरुल चोन्नार
And they said that and all the devil and sin and swobed unto us
पतिने इरुवतान वसनतिलु नम अदय पार्कम्बडिय
We can see this in 20th verse
अप्पो एसुक्क किल्पडिन्दा अदय आविगल, सीडरलुक्क किल्पडिन्दलाहे वेदम सुट्टीकाटिगरदे
And the scripture is pointing out the spirit that is subjected unto Jesus also subjected to disciples
इंदे अडत्ले एसुक्के कात्रुम कदलुम किल्पडिन्ददे
And here the wind and sea obey to Jesus
किल्पडिदल एन्बदे देवुनुडय ओरु सुभाव
And so obedience it is the character of God
इलाव्टल कृष्णुडय ओरु देवीकत तन्मय
Or it is the divine nature of Christ
इंदक किल्पडिदल एन्बदे ओनुडय किल्पडिलिले अडंगिरकर
And this obedience is subject under your obedience
नी किल्पडिन्दाल, वनुक्क मत्तविगल किल्पडिय
When you obey and everything will obey unto you
नी किल्पडियाविताल, ओन्ड्रुमय वनुक्क किल्पडिय
If you obey not and nothing will obey unto you
याक्कोबु नांगामतिकारण एलावसनतिले नम पार्कम्बड़दे
When we look unto James, chapter 4, verse 7
नींगल देवुनुक्क किल्पडिन्दरुंगल, पिशासुक्क एदुतिनिल्लंगल
And it is said that and we obey unto God and this is the devil
देवुनुक्क किल्पडिगरवन्दा, पिशासय एदुत्त किल्पडुथा मुड़िय
And those that are submitting themselves to God and they can resist the devil
अंडसरासरंगलाई पडेत देवन, अनैत्य्युम तनुडय वार्तिनाले किल्पडुथुगर
And the Lord who created the whole universe and he was subjecting everything under his work
अप्पु नी किल्पडिन्दाल, सकलमु किल्पडिय
When you obey and everything will be subjected unto you
नी किल्पडियाविताल, सकलमु किल्पडिय
And if you obey not and nothing will obey unto you
इरे कुरितु एवरयँ रेंडा मतिकारम येलु ईट्टु वसनंगलिले नम पार्कम्बड़दे
And about this when we read unto Hebrews, chapter 2, verse 7 and 8
नी मनिदन किल्पडियुम्बड़दे, सकलमु किल्पट्रिंददे
And when everything obeyed and everything was subjected unto him
एवरयँ रेंडी येल एन्ना सोल्गरदे
And 2:7 of Hebrews, what it says
सकलत्युम अवनुडय पादंगुलुक्क किल्पडितिनिय
And the Lord subjected everything under his feet
ईट्टावसनम एन्ना सोल्गरदे
And what the eighth verse says
सकलमु अवनुक्क किल्पडितिनार एन्गर विषयतिल
And so in the matter that everything was subjection under him
अवर अवनुक्क किल्पडुथाद पोरुल ओन्ड्रुम इल्लाय
And so there is nothing under put him under the earth
अप्पुडि इरुंदुम
And even like this
इप्पोल्डु सकलमु अवनुक्क किल्पट्रिकक कानो
And so we seek not at all things under him
अप्पो इरुंदु देवुनुडे तिट्टत पुरुंजिकोंग, नरंदा असंभावितत्ते निंगल वेलंगिकोल्लवेन
And from this you can understand the plan of God and also the danger occurred in this place
सकलमु मनिष्युनुक्क किल्पडियनो, अदु दान देवुनुडे तिट्टम
And everything must subjected unto man and that is the plan of God
नी पो, अब्रिनान अन्द मिरुहम पोइनो
And when man sees the beast to go, it should go
एसुमि नामतले वेलगे, अब्रिनान वेलगियनो
And if they see in the name of Jesus depart, it should depart
निल, अब्रिनान मलान निन्ड्रनो
And if it sees to stop and the rain must cease
सरुवसिस्तिययु, मनिदनुक्क पादंगुलुक्क किल्पडितिना, कालुक्क किल्पडितिनारुन्ना चोल्यूर
And it said that the Lord made all creation and subjection under his feet
अवनुक्क किल्पडुथाद पोरुल ओन्ड्रुमय कटय
And there is nothing was kept under his feet
अब्रतम बाइबिल सोल्गरदे
That's what the Bible says
इदु, इदुन एन्द एक्संप्शनु कांग कत्तर कुडुकवेल
And the Lord did not give any exemption
इंद पोरुल किल्पडियादु, इदु किल्पडियो, अब्रिलास सोल्वेल
And didn't see that and this will obey you and this will not obey you
अनन नरंददे नाह
But you know what happened
इवन यप्पोल्डु मनिदन देवुनुक्क किल्पडियामल पोनानो
And when men did not obey unto God
अंद्रिलु ओन्ड्रुमय किल्पडियामल पोनदे
And from that day onwards and nothing obeyed to him
इवन किल्पडियाद पच्चत्ले, इप्पोल्डु सकलमु अवनुक्क किल्पट्रिकक कानो
And so the time that he was not obeyed and so nothing was put under him
अब्रियानाली इंदन नाटकिले, देवन नमक अभिषेकत्ते कुडुतदु एदरकाह
In these days and what is the purpose for the law to give us anointing?
पिलिपियर मून्रा मतिकारण इरुवती ओर वसनतिले पार्कम्बड़दे
When we look unto Philippians, chapter 3, verse 21
नम अभिषेकत्तिन्मूलमाग, सकलत्युम किल्पडुथा मुड़िय
And through anointing and we can subject everything
अवर येलावतियु तमक्क किल्पडितिकोल्डतकराहे, तमुडय वल्लमयुल्ला सयलिन्बडी एन्ड्र सोल्पट्रिकरदे
And so it is said that to subject everything and so by his powerful work
ओरु देवुनुडय पिल्ले उडय किल्पडिदल एन्बदे, देवुनुक्क मुन्भाग अदु विलयरपेट्तदाहिरकरदे
And so the obedience of the children of God and it becomes also precious before the sight of God
अवन किल्प, एवलो किल्पडियरानो, अप्पडिपट्टा मदिजन वाइतुदा, देवन येदावु ओन्ड्रु चय्यमुड़िय
And so to what extent he obeys only with that person and the Lord can do something with him
किल्पडियाद ओरु विश्वासीययु, किल्पडियाद ओरु ऊळियनयु, वाइतु देवन येदयुम सादिकय इल्लाद
With disobedient servant of God and disobedient believer and the Lord cannot achieve anything
एसु पिदावुक्क किल्पडिन्दरुंदार
And Jesus obeyed his father
इप्पोल्डु मट्टुमल्ले, यप्पोल्डुमय किल्पडिन्दार
And not only now and all the times he obeyed him
अवर पोन चोन्ना वरुवर
When he says go and he come
अवर उक्करना उक्कान्दुर
When he says to sit, he sits
अवर चोन्नादा अवर सय्यवर
And so whatever he commands, he obeyed
ओर अर्प्पुदन सिंजा कुड़े, अवर एसु पिदा सिंजदा पात्रदा सय्यवर
And even when he performed miracles, only we looking unto father and he performed miracles
एन?
Why?
अवर किल्पडिदले कट्टुकोण्डवर
And he was the one who learned obedience
एवरयँ रिक्लनु निर्भम वाइंदामतिकारतिले नम पार्कम्बड़दे
When we look unto Epistleto Hebrews, chapter 5
ईट्टावसनम एन्ना सोल्गरदे
And what he says
अवर कुमारनाहिरुंदु पट्ट पाडुगिलिनाले किल्पडिदले कट्टुकोण्डार
And though he were a son, it learned he obeysed by the things which he suffered
किल्पडिदल एन्बदे कृष्णुडय विलयरपेट्सुभाव
Obedience it is a precious character of Christ
इरे कुरितु नम पार्कम्बड़दे
When we see about this
पिलिपियर ईरंडामतिकारतिले नम अवरुडय किल्पडिदलिन तन्मये पार्कलाम
And we can see the nature of his obedience in Philippians, chapter 2
एप्पडिपट्टा किल्पडिदल
And what kind of obedience
मरनाबरियंदम किल्पडिदल
And he obeyed unto the death of cross
ईरंडामतिकारण ईट्टुले निंगल इदय पार्कम्बडिय
And we can see Philippians, chapter 2, verse 8
मरनाबरियंदम
And unto the death of cross
अदा ओरु सिलुवयीन मरनाबरियंदम किल्पडिन्दवर आनार
And he obeyed unto him unto the death of cross
इवर किल्पडिन्दबडिनाल्दा, अवरुक्क सकलमु किल्पट्तदे
And he obeyed and so everything was subjected under him
इन्ने कि निंगलु ओढ़ पिशासत तोरत्रिंग, नानु तोरत्र
Even today and you and I are casting out the demons
चिलकारिंगल नरक्क कुड़ादुन चोल्ड्रो, चिलकारिंगल आंदवरु नीर चय्यनुन चोल्ड्रो
And we are telling God some things did not happen and we asking God to something to perform
अदु सुमा वार्तय जालंगल अल्लाह
But it is not just the magic of our words
अदु निरयवेर वेन्दिदे अवश्यय
It is very needed for us to be fulfilled
इप्पो एलिया सोल्गरान
Now Elijah says
नासोल्लिटा, मलापय्याद
And I said, it will not rain
नासोल्लिटा, इनिमय पनीपय्याद
And I said that there will not be dew
नासोल्लर वरिका अदु सय्याद
And what I say, it will not do
अप्पुडि ओरु तिट्टन नम्बिके, अवनुक्ले इरुंददे
And so he had such a confidence in him
कारणम एन्ना?
And what is the reason?
ओन्नराजाकल पतिनेलु ओन्नले निंगल पार्कम्बड़दे
When we look unto First Kings, chapter 17, verse 1
एन्नुडय वाकिन्बडी अंद्रि, इसरेवेलिले मलायु, पनियु पीवदिल्ले एन्ड्र, नान कत्रुडय जीवनकुंड आनय्युगर
And so he said that and God awayed words and so I went alone and promised I did not happen unto them
अवन अपोन चोन्ना, बोवा
And so when he said to go and he'll go
तिरकसन चोल्युना, सोल्वा
And we asked to utter prophecy, he will utter prophecy
राजाकलुक्क सोल्युना, सोल्वा, देसंगलुक्क सोल्वा, तनिमनिदनुक्क सोल्वा
And he will utter the prophecy to the kings, to the country and to the personal men
अवुडय किल्पडिदलुकाहे, देवन अवनुक्क सकलत्युम किल्पडितिनार
And so because of his obedience and the Lord subjected everything under his feet
मूनराय वरुडंगल, मलायु, पनियु, पय्यल
Three and a half years and there was no dew or rain
इप्पो मरुबडी जबिकरा
Now once again he prayed
मलापय्यनुन चोल्ड्रो
And he says the Lord to give rain
इदु वरै कट्टुपट्ट्रिंददु, मरुबडी अवनुक्क किल्पडिन्ददे
And that was subject under him and he again obeyed to him
अप्पो इरुंदु एन्ना वेलंगिकोल्ल
So what do we understand from this?
नाम देवुनुडे समुगतले जे किल्पडिन्दाल, नमक्क देवन सकलत्युम किल्पडुथुवा
When we obey into the presence of God and the Lord will subject everything under his feet
एन्ड्रिक मनिदन एदन दोडुतले किल्पडियामल पोनानो
When the man disobeyed into the Eden garden
अंद्रिकीता मनिदनुरुकुले, एलारुकुल्यु विलुगयु, किल्पडियामयिन्मूला नस्तमुम वरुगरदे
And from that day onwards and they came falling and because of this unaccountless of his obedience
रोमर 5:19
When we look unto Romans, chapter 5, verse 19
इंदक किल्पडियामय, इलाव्टल किल्पडिदल, इंद रेंडल्ल उल्लनाने, तन्मयन, पादिपुगल, इलाव्टल सादगंगल एन्ना
And what are the causes and effects because of the obedience and disobedience
ओरु मनिष्युक्क किल्पडियामल पोनाल
If the man disobeys
अनेगर पाविगलाकम मारुवार
And many becomes a sinner
ओरुवन किल्पडिन्दाल
If one obeys
अनेगर नीतिमान्गल आक्कपटुवार
And everything, many shall be made righteous
इप्पो मनवीमारुलास सिंधिचु पारिंग
Now all the wives you think about this
इप्पे पिल्लेगलालास सिंधिचु पारिंग
And all the children consider
इप्पे एलास सगोदरस, सगोद्रले सिंधितु पारिंग
Now all brothers and sisters consider this
रोमर 5:19
Romans, chapter 5, verse 19
अनैगर पाविगल आक्कपट्टदे पोले, ओरुवरुडय किल्पडिदलिनाले, अनैगर नीतिमान्गल आक्कपटुवार
ओरु मनिष्युनुडय किल्पडियामयिनाले, अनेगर पाविगलाकम मार्छपट्टार्क
And because of one man's disobedience and many were made sinners
ओरु मनिष्युनुडय किल्पडिदलिनाले, अनेगर नीतिमान्गल आक्कपटुगर
And so by the obedience of one man shall many made righteous
अप्पो ओरा आलुडय किल्पडिदल एन्बदे, ओरु नीतिमानुडय संदरी उरुवाकुरदे, ओरु ओरा आलुडय किल्पडियामय, अनेगर आई पाविगलाकम मार्छुगरदे
And one man's obedience and make many generations righteous, but one man's disobedience and make many generation as sinners
इन्ने कि किल्पडिदल दाङ, नमुडय जानंगलुकुले रुकर, ओरु किल्पडियामयदा, नमुडय जानंगलुकुले रुकर परियत तोल्वी
And today and disobedience is a great failure in the people's life
बाइबिल एन्ना सोल्गरदे
What the scripture says
बलियाई पार्किलुम किल्पडिदल, उत्तमम
And so it is said that it is right for them to obey down the sacrifice
नी उभवास्म बोर्डरदा काटिलो
And more than taking fasting
मनिकनका नी जबिपदे पार्किलो
And taking for harvest together you pray
मुलंगाले निप्पदे पार्किलो
And more than you stand on knees
कायगले वेति मनिकनका निप्पदे पार्किलो
And more than standing for harvest together lifting up your hands
बाइबिल सोल्गरदे, नी किल्पडिदल उत्तमम
The Bible says and obedience is right
ओन्नु सामुवेल 25:22 इंद वार्ते पार्कलाम
We can see this word in First Samuel, chapter 25, verse 22
15:22 अदरक्कु सामुवेल, कर्त्रुडय सत्ततिर्के किल्पडिगरदे पार्किलु
ओन्नु सामुवेल 15:22, sorry
15:22 of First Samuel
अदरक्कु सामुवेल, कर्त्रुडय सत्ततिर्के किल्पडिगरदे पार्किलु, सर्वांग दगनंगलु, पलिगलु, कर्त्रुक्क प्रियमाय इर्कुमो पलियाई पार्किलु, किल्पडिदलु, आठुकडाकली निनत्ते पार्किलु, सेविकोडुथलु, उत्तमम
बलियाई पार्किलु, किल्पडिदल उत्तमम
Behold to obey is better than sacrifice
नल्ला पुरुंजिकोंग, किल्पडिदलुकुल्लदा ओन्डय लाइफ़े अडंगिरक
Understand well, in obedience your life was completely demolished
नी कत्रुडय वार्तिके किल्पडियामल पोनाल
And when you harken to not know the voice of the Lord
नदत्तीपुकु नी किल्पडियामल पोनाल
When you obey not to the leading
परिसुत्त आवियानोरुक्क नी किल्पडियामल पोनाल
When you obey not to the Holy Spirit
वनुक्क ओन्नु कंट्रोल वराद
And nothing will come under your control
एन इन्ड्राल
Because
किल्पडियाद वर्गल, देवुनुडय राज्यदुकुले काल्वेकरदिल्ला
And thee that are not obeying, they cannot keep into the hegemony of heaven
किल्पडियामय एन्बदे, अदु ओरु विलुगय
And disobedience it is a falling
एवरयँ रिक्लनु निर्भम नांगामतिकारण पतिनोर वसनतिले पार्कम्बड़दे
When we look unto Epistleto Hebrews, chapter 4, verse 11
ओरुवन आगिलु, किल्पडियामयिनाले विलुंदु पोगाद बडिक
And so even one and because of disobedience he did not fall away
एवरयँ ईर मून्रू पतिनिट्टै पार्कम्बड़दे
When we look at the 3:18 of Hebrews
अवर्गल एन्नुडय एलाईपार्दिल प्रवेशिप्पदिल्ले एन्ड्र, ओरु कोटत्तारे कुरितु नान आनय्युट्टै
And so unto one group I swear he that will not enter into his rest
यार अवर्गल?
And who are thee?
किल्पडियाद उल्लय कुरित्तल्लवा
And it is about thee that had unbeliev
अप्पो किल्पडिदल दा, ओन्नय एलाईपार्दिलुकुले वाली नर्द्द
And so this disobedience will
किल्पडिदल दा, ओन्नय एलाईपार्दिलुकुले वाली नर्द्द
This obedience will take you and to rest
किल्पडियामय एन्बदे, ओन्डय वाल्किनुडय वील्च
And disobedience and it is a falling in your life
इप्पो निंग योसिंग, ओन्गा कुड़मतले निंग एवलो किल्पडिगरीर
Now you consider and what far extent and you are obeying in your life
अन ओन्गुल्को वन्दिन्दक किल्पडिदलिंगरदे दा, फर्स्ट स्टेप
And so for you, this obedience is a first step
एलाट्रय विडक कीलाउल्ला फर्स्ट पडियन्दे चलिंग निंग एन्ना सोल्यूरिंग, नागन नालु पडी जम्प पनिरुवा बिंगरिंग
Are you telling that I will climb over four steps?
एलापडियलिलियु, किल्पडिदल, कीलाउल्ला पडियन्दे अल्कबरन ने सोल्यूरिंग, फर्स्ट स्टेपुन सोल्यूरिंग, अब्रिनान इलाव्टा किल्पडिदल
And so you took all or then at other steps at the first step
इंद फर्स्ट स्टेपनी करेक्टमितिच यार
And you have to take over the first step rightly
इदुकुल्लदा कृष्टवम मराइंद्रकरदे
And so this and that and the Christianity was mentioned
इदुकुल्लदा पुनितत तन्मय मराइंद्रकरदे
And so in this and the purity incident
इदुलदा कुड़म्बत्तिन आइकयम मराइंद्रकरदे
And here and the fellowship, the family is united
एलिदि विचिक
And so you write it down
यप्पोल्डु ओरु मनवी, इलाव्ट ओरु पुरुष, ओरु पिल्ले किल्पडियामय काट्रानो, अप्पोल्डु कुड़म्ब ओरवु सदैक्कपटुगरदे
When wife or husband and shows disobedience in their life and there, their family is corrupted or divided
यप्पोल्डु ओरु ऊळियन किल्पडियामये काट्टुगरानो, अप्पोल्डु ऊळियत्तीन आमिप्पस सदैक्कपटुगरदे
And when the servant of God shows and this obedience and the specific of the ministry is corrupted
योनावे कत्तर अंग निनिवेकु पोसोल्ड्रार
And the Lord said Jonah to go to Ninhivim
अवनाले किल्पडिय मुड़ियल्ला
And he was not able to obey
अदनाल नरंदा सम्बावुंगला, ओन्गुल्क एलारुक्क खदया तेर
And so you all know the incidents as a story
बट अदेश टाइटले
But after some few minutes
कदल रुकरदा, ओरु मीनुक्क देवन कट्लयुगर
And the Lord commanded at first for the sins
अदु एन्ना सीदे
And what it does
किल्पडियदे
And it obeyed to him
अदु परिय प्रश्न एन्ना
And so you know what is the great problem
यप्पुडि किल्पडियनो
And how to obey
अदु अवन अकडिचरकुडाद
And it should not back him
एन्ना सीनो
And what it should do
विलुंगनो
And it should swallow him
अंद विलुंगननाना मनिष्युन, यरपाइले कोण्डु बिरकुडाद
And it should not take him into the willows and dole swallow
पुरीदा ओन्गुल्के
Can you understand?
चाप्ट अवन, अवन कोण्डु बिर यरपाइले दलिसिना, कुन्निनात्ले मिशिन निंजिरो अरच्चरो
And so within a few minutes and when he swallowed the place and it became red and dense
अवन ओरु पार्टिकुलर प्लेसले निप्पडिवेगन
And so he must stand in a particular place
अदुक्क परगे, अवन कुरिकपट्टा अड्डले बोइ काकनो
Then after and it must kick him out at the particular place
अदु करेक्ट डिस्टिनेशनले काकनो, वेयर ओरु तीवले कायकिरकुडाद
And it should be thrown out at the destination please
अप्पा अदु केबडि निनिवेन तेरियो
And so how it knows it is Ninhivim
किल्पडिदल
And that is obedience
ओनुडय किल्पडिदल दा, ओरु, ओरु मिरुत्तुक्क किल्पडिदल रुके, वनुक्क किल्पडिदल इल्ल
And so there is obedience for animal, but you don't have that obedience
पिलयाम ओरु परिय तीर्कदरिश
And Balaam and he is a great prophet
अवन अकत्तर सोल्ड्रा, नी पोगादन सोल्ड्र
The Lord said to him and you should not go
मरुबडी, मरुबडी अवन टार्चर पन्ना ओन्ने
And again again and we are tortured
इवन तिरुम्बोइ जबतला उक्कार
And he tarried him in prayer
इप्पे जबतला उक्कान्द ओन्ने, अवनुक्क ओरु तूंडुदल, पो, अब्रिन
And when he sat on prayers and he heard urging to go
कत्तरे पो सोल्ड्र
And the Lord said him to go
अना इप्पन नरकरदे नाह
But he know what happened
अवनुक्क अंद मिर, तेवदुदन निप्पदे तेरियामले पोगर
And he could not see the angel of God standing before him
यप्पो नी किल्पडियलयो, अप्पो वनुक्क दरिशन ओन्ने विट्टे वेलिया पोइडो
And when you disobey and that time and you will lose your vision
ओनुडय आलय पो ओन्ने विट्टे वेलयपोइडो
And the calling will depart you
देवन सोल्वा, अदन नी अप्पुडि या किल्पडियनो
And the Lord says but you have to implicitly obey
अदा अदु ऊळियत्तले फर्स्ट सोल्युकुडुपांग, इप्पस सोल्युकुडुगरांग इल्ल तेरियल्ला
In the ministry they used to teach us the beginning
किल्पडिदल्ला, पेंटिकास्टिकारणक्क रुकवेन्दिय किल्पडिदल एन्ना, केल्विगत्काद किल्पडिदल
And so the obedience and the bent custom must have questions without any questions
एन?
Why?
एदरक
What?
अब्रिनिरक क्वस्टिने निसिकुडाद इर्कुडाद
And there should not be any such questions
ओन्न येगसुदनी, नी बलियुवा याह
And you have to sacrifice your sin
याह अंदर, अवन नाह ओन्गुल्क तेरिंजाना
And he was known into your eyes
नावन नासावर
And let me die
नान नौर वेसाइपोचे
And so I was hundred years old
इलन नौती पायन, नौतीरू वेसाइचे
Or I am in hundred and twenty years old
याह एन्ने एडुत्कंग
And you take me out
याम पिल्लय बोइ यांगा कैकिरिंग
And why you asking my son?
इप्पडिलाय यार बेसल किल्पडिदल्ला, आब्राहम अडिकुद्ग आलय कटय
And there is no one to beat in obedience like Abraham
आदियामु इरुवती आर नाल्ले पार्कम्बड़दे
When we look unto Genesis, chapter 26, verse 4
अंद ओर सोल्ड्र, आब्राहम इन सोल्लुक्क किल्पडिन्द ओरु आल
And the Lord is saying something about Abraham and he obeyed my words
आब्राहम इन सोल्लुक्क किल्पडिन्द
पारिंग आब्राहम इन सोल्लुक्क किल्पडिगरवन, अदनाल दा नावन आलच्च कोण्डु वन्द्रकर
And so he obeyed my words and so I called him and brought him
एन्ग बोरनु सोल्लल्ल
And didn't see where to go
नान वनुक्क कान्बिकु देसतुके नी पो
And you go to the country which I showed for thee
रेबेकालुके, माप्लय काटल
And the Lord did not show the bride to Rebecca
नेटले चैटिंग, डेटिंग, ऊरचुत्र केसलांग कटय
And so there was no chatting or dating or going around the city
नी इंद मनिष्युनोडु पोरिया
And do you want to go with this man?
अवला
And that's what the question
अदुक्क किल्पडिन्दा
And she obeyed
किल्पडिदल दा, अवल ओरु परिय संदरीक्क तायाकम मार्छिनदे
And obedience and made her a mother for the generations
नी किल्पडिगरा, इप्पो नी ओरु वेलसलतिल निंग वेलसेरिंग ओन्गुल्क मेलानुलुक्क निंग किल्पडिचिंगना, अदु देवुनुक्क किल्पडिंज
And you are obeying or you are working in a job spot when you are obeying to your superiors and that is a great obedience
एलिदि विचिक
And write it down
ओनुडय रोमर 13:1, 1:2, 3:4 वसन एन्ना सोल्गरदे
Romans, chapter 13, verse 1, 2, 3, 4, what it says
मेलान अधिकारमुल्लुके, नी किल्पडिय वेन्दु
And we must subject unto our superior officers
एन्द देवन दा, अवन अंद अड्डले उक्कार वच्चिरक
Because the Lord appointed them in that position
अप्पो नी किल्पडिदलिंगरदा, नी कट्टुक
And so you have to learn of obedience
केल्विगत्काद किल्पडिदले कट्टुक
And so you have to receive the obedience without questioning
ओरु वेल किल्पडियम्बड़दु, वनुक्क रत्रसिंधला
And sometimes when you obey and you may shed blood
किल्पडियम्बड़दु, वनुक्क कस्टम रुकला
And so when you obey and there may be difficulties
किल्पडिदलुपोले, ओरु पाडुगल इंजीविय, वेयर ओन्ड्रुमय कटय
And there is no life of suffering and would then obey
मत्त पाडुगल्ले, ओरु वेल ओरु सरीर कस्टम पन्नला
In other sufferings and sometimes your body may suffer
चिलक पाडुगल्ले, ओम मानस कस्टम पन्नला
In some of your sufferings, your mind may suffer
अनक्किल्पडिदल्ला, सरीरमु, मानस रेंडुंक शेंदु पाडुबटो
But in obedience, your mind and your body both will suffer
एसु पिदावुक्क किल्पडिन्ददे नाल
And Jesus obeyed his father
सरीरम मुलुवुद अडिच्चि तुंगवुट्टा
And so they crushed his whole body and hang him around
अदेय नर्थले, अवर मानसला बायंगर वेदनय अनुव
At the same time and he suffered a great pain in his mind
यप्पुडि पट्ट ओरु पोराट्टम एन्बदे निंगल पारिंग
And so you must think on what kind of conflict pass through
अदनाल किल्पडिदल एन्बदे, पाडुगले कोण्डु वरो, अना, अदु ओरु पूर्णत्ते ओनुक्ले कोण्डु वरुम एन्बदे, नी निदानिक्क वेन्दु
Obedience brings sufferings, but you have to understand it brings perfection in you
एसु अप्पडिपट्टा ओरु किल्पडिदले, चिन्न प्रायतिले कट्टुकोण्डार
And Jesus learned of such obedience in his age
लुका 2:51
When we look unto Luke, chapter 2, verse 51
एसु अवरुलुक्क, पेट्रोरुलुक्क किल्पडिन्दरुंदार
And Jesus obeyed to their parents
अदनाल दा, अवुडय वाल्किय, रंद्राग, कट्टी एलुप्पट्तदे
And so this valik was built up in a better man
पेट्रोरुक्क किल्पडिदल एन्गरदे, कृष्टवत्रुडय ओरु अस्तिबार
And obeying to our parents and that is one foundation of Christianity
ओरु ताइदगपुनुक्क ओरुतन किल्पडियादवन, देवुनुक्क किल्पडिय माट्ठ
And he that obeyed not to their parents and will not obey to God
अदनाल दा, ओरु चिलक बायंगल्ला, इंग वन्दु बायंगरम वालसिवा, वीटले ओरु वेल इन्सेयमाट कर्सले पारिंग, कुन्निनात्ले करिचा, अवसाबिले इरुकमाट
And some boys and they will come and labor much in the faith home, but they will not work in their home and they will not stand for their homes
नान प्राक्टिकलाल सोल्ड्र
I'm telling practically
नान इंद पादिललाल पोइत्तदा वन्द
And I too travel in such paths
कत्तरुक्क नी किल्पडिंजना, नी आटमटिका यारुक्क किल्पडिव पेट्रोरुक्क किल्पडियनो
And when you obey God and automatically you must obey to your parents
रेंडमय बैलेंस दा
And both should be balanced living
एसु पेट्रोरुक्क किल्पडिन्दरुंदार
And Jesus obeyed to their parents
अदेय नर्थले, पिदावुक्क निसिंझिर्नार किल्पडिन्दरुंदार
At the same time, he obeyed his father too
देवुनुक्क ओरुतन किल्पडिंजना, अव आटमटिका तानावे पेट्रोरुक्क किल्पडिव
If one obeyed to God and automatically he will obey their parents
याक्कोबे कुरितु नम पार्कम्बड़दे
When we see about Jacob
आदियामु 28:7 एन्ना सोल्गरदे
And 28:7 of Genesis, what it says
आदियामु 28:7
याक्कोबु, तन तगप्पनुक्क, तन ताइकुम किल्पडिन्द
याक्कोबु, तन तगप्पनुक्क, ताइकुम किल्पडिन्दरुंदार
And so Jacob obeyed his father and his mother
एन कामनाओ ओरु वेड यूस्पन्ल
And so why he did not use those words there?
पेट्रोरुन याह सोल्लल्ला, अंद अर्थ
And why to say that as parents?
एसुक्क मट्टु लुका 2:51 ले पेट्रोरुन सोल्यूरिक
But for Luke 2, what 51 says, "And parents"
अन इंद अड्डले मट्टी याक्कोबुक्क चोल्यूरिक, अवन ताइकुम, तगप्पनुक्क, अब्रिनान एन्ना अर्थ इन्ने को ओरु चिलक पिल्लेंग, एबडि इरकांग अम्मा सोना कप्पा इलन अप्पा सोना कप्पा इलन अप्पा सोना, नी एन्ना सोल्यूरिंग एन्गरदे अम्मा सोना, नी एन्ना सोल्यूरिंग, अप्पा दा नाम बेसिक इदु दा, किल्पडिदल्ल उल्ले, ओरु बुगरी वील्च
And Jacob obeyed his father and mother, it's mentioned both the terms, but some of her children and they will obey to their father and mother And so if they obey to the one side and that is the falling takes place in their life
नान सोल्नरदे, सत्य ओन्गुल्क पुरीदा
And can you understand the truth which I'm saying?
अम्मा उमला पासा रुको, अम्मा सोना किल्पडिव
And they will have the care towards the mother and when she says and they will obey
अप्पा मला बायम रुको, अनाल अप्पा सोल्लुक्क मट्टिन किल्पडिव अम्मा उक्क मला पासा रुको, अनक्किल्पडिदल रुकाद
And when they fear father and so they obey what the father sees and they have love towards mother, they will not obey what she sees
किल्पडिदल दा, नमुडय कृष्टवत्रुडय अस्तिबार
And obedience it is a foundation of your Christian life
नी ओरु कृष्टिन, अब्रिनान, यावनुक्क किल्पडिदल रुकन
If you are a Christian and there should be obedience
किल्पडिदल दा, कृष्टवत्रुडय पुनितत तन्मय
And so this is obedience and that is the purity of the Christianity
अदु दान तोवक्क, अदु दान मुडिव
And that is the beginning and that is the end
इंद रेंडो, अंद इंद किल्पडिदले ओरुतन प्रैक्टिस पनिकिदे वर्राना, अवनुक्क निच्युम परलो हुंड, एलाईपार्दिलिले अवनु प्रवेशिप
If one obeys or one practices obedience and sure there is rest to him and he will enter into rest
रेंडु कुरिंदियर ईरंडु ओन्बदे पार्कम्बड़दे
When we look unto 2 Corinthians, chapter 2, verse 9
वेदम एन्ना सोल्गरदे
And what the scripture says
एलावतिलु, निंगल किल्पडिय वेन्दु
And you must obey to all
निंगल एलावतिले युम किल्पडिन्दरुकरीरुलो
And so will you obey obedient of all things?
निंगल एलावतिले युम किल्पडिन्दरुकरीरुलो एन्ड्र, उंगली सोधी तेरियम्बडी, पडियलदि
एलावतिलो ओरु विश्वासी, ओरु ऊळियकारण किल्पडियन
A believer or a servant of God must be obedient to all things
एलुतिन प्रकारमाना कारियंगलिलो
And only little matters
इलाव्टा स्पिरिचुअल कारियंग
And also the spiritual matters
अवन एलावतिलु किल्पडिदल, अवनुक्क प्रैक्टिस तेव
And so he must have a practice to obey unto all things
इप्पुडि नी किल्प, इप्पुडि एसु किल्पडिन्दरुंदार
And Jesus obeyed in such manner
मुदलावु पेट्रोरुक्क किल्पडिन्दार
And first he obeyed to his parents
अदुक्क पिन्डु अवर पिदावुक्क मुट्टिलमाय किल्पडिन्दरुंदार
And nextly and he obeyed completely unto father
अदनाल, अवर वायत तरंदा आविगल किल्पडिय
And so when he opened his mouth and the spirit subjected to him
इप्पन दा नम अद सब्जेक्टुक वरा पोर
Now we are going to come to the subjects
अवर सोन्ना, अंद आवि वेलहु
And so when he sees and the spirit will depart
कनसरेत्त कडकरले यरंगिरार
And so he entered into the inside currents
कनसरेत्त कडकरले यरंगिरार
And he entered into the sea of Gennesaret
अंद कडकरले यरंगन ओडने
And he entered into the sea
एंटर इन्द सील, सीशोर कडक करले वन्द यरंगिरार
And he entered into the sea shore
अंग यरंगन ओडने, अंद आवि कत्तुद
And so when he entered into the sea shore and the spirit shouted
एंगले वेदन इप्पडुथवा वन्दीर
And did you come to torment us?
निंग कीला पडिचु पादिंग
And so when you read the first verse
अवर अवैगलुक्क यर्कनावे कट्लयुदुंदार
And already the Lord commanded those spirits
यरंगुम्बोदे, अवर कमेंट पन्टार, इंग रुकर आवि अवलोत्युम कंट्रोल पन्ट
And so when he came down and he controlled all the spirits
नी वेटुक्क बोम्बोदे
When you go home
इलाव्ट डेली आविस्कु बोम्बोदे
Or when you go to office
अंग रुकर आवियन नी एन्ना सीनो कंट्रोल पन्टु पोर
And you have to bind and control the spirits
ओरु पुदु वेडुक्क पोरिंग
When you're entering into your house and a
Avianor sanar, kudikyaada.
And the spirit of God said, don't drink.
Iveruke, and the sisters solra sattho satthama kekude. Indha sattho engarunna varude, ulle kulunna varude, kudikyaadans.
And what the sister said, and he was able to hear louder, and so, but inside he heard a voice, and don't drink.
Veliyalala sattho, over tack mani vittadu.
And so, he overtook the voice and came out.
Anakka appu eva durutala varumboladu, oru addi ulundichu kaila, kapu kielu undu noringi pichu.
But when the cup came no distance, and he got the beating in his hands, and the cup was fall down and broken into pieces.
Yarilaa, manishinekadeyadu. Kapu kielu undu tapaa nu noringi undu onne, and the sister vandu damanu undu malangal potte, kaalu undu, manichirunga pastor, naanu, ongalavasiyam untrathukutha andu juice kudutha, ayayoyo avianor venttaru nusoli, pottunikal undu.
When the cup fell down, went broken into pieces, the sister fell down and said, to mesmerize you, I've done this, and so, he asked a pardon unto him.
Andor onda pesuvare.
And the Lord may speak unto you.
Neekilpadiyino.
And you must obey.
Poha dembaru.
And you may say not to go.
Nighte kalambi viddu godi chandruvaduvaru.
And you must to see and travel by night and go home.
Naanu vaali vepara, payanara irundanga.
And I was also anghboy at the time.
Oru local conventionukku poira.
And went to a local convention.
Vaisaitanala ipar solra.
And so, I became bold, I'm telling this now.
Apa yana kuyisupadinittu.
And I was eighteen years old that time.
Oru local conventionukku poira.
I went to a local convention.
Kaalela, nyanasana aradanai, narakapodu.
And morning baptism service.
Kaala bible study.
And bible study.
Adurukramatlal oru narakar, oru convention.
And it was a convention took place at village.
Night, kaale endikumbo da andor sanar, onakkui inge kani vekyappadurukaradu.
When I woke up in the morning, the Lord said, and there was a snake kept before you.
Onakkui inge, kani vekyappadurukaradu, ini ta first prasangaya life la solra ida.
And so, I'm telling this as first time, and so, the Lord said, and the snake was kept before you.
Na usharaita.
And so, I became strong.
Sari, ini konventionle irukkuru ennella, oorungu kadeyadu.
And so, there is no need to go to convention anymore.
Odiyebenno.
And I began to revise.
Ah, vittlarukkuru prasangaya kana kola kalamarki, idhulayidhugare, inge kani varavichitana, kayaaralangara oru adatala, so.
And there was an accountable problem in my family, and so, there was a snake kept before me, and so, I did not depart the place.
If a bible study muddinji, ah, na varai, anganga patha, ponngalala yari ninnu, marilani diinu, palakati ninna. Aha, start aidichu, kani signal undurichu, indu, yana kuruunjichu.
After the bible study was over, and then.
Avasiyam illama, yavun sirigibradu.
And so, without urgency, and no one should smile.
Avasiyam illama, yavun thirimbi pakku vudadu.
And so, without need, and you should never turn back.
Idhucharchi.
And this is church.
Ponidasalau.
And this is the pure place.
Neenikkarayadam parisutthasalau, serupa kalathanu sanar, yosuvada.
The place where you are standing, it is holy place, and he asked him to remove his shoe.
Ah, na patha.
I saw.
Idhunna na nettenaitu variki illada signal na bangarama varudhu.
And so, I did not have any such problems till yesterday, and the signal is coming now.
Ingetrimi patha, andapathi ingenikidu, konjarangaliju kanna mudidu, sari, nama kalambalaman patha maadi lenikidu. Ella, andukumbal abri sudhi darunidu, patha right, yadra bussa, bussa, eri ticket kuduthu, odiyebenno, thututhu, diwiddu, widundu.
And so, when they were looking unto me, I took the bus and took them.
Anneyo da aviyunjichu, poeyubudichu.
And so, from that day onwards, and the spirit departed me.
Ni anga superstar maanu nikiti, ippidi ippidi, ni ilithu vutinna, ni sholi muddinja, ni CEO nukku bomata, Erisellemukku, pomata, ini indha sabayla irukkumata.
And like a superstar, when you stand in the place, and you cannot go to Zion or New Jerusalem, and you will never stand in this church.
Avianor, avianor sensar adipar.
And the spirit of God will give you the sense.
Bell adipar.
And he will ring the bell.
Eerya prayer ka poira, adu odipudu.
And so, you should not stand in the place, and you must remove out of the place.
Onneye, taasethu minbidi karu, enda uliyamun thavailla.
And you don't want the ministry that you die and to catch the fish.
Na solrada karaita?
Can you understand what I say?
Endavaru vaali vepayanu, endavaru vaali veponnukku suviseshin cholla kudadu.
And no anghboy, and should give a gospel to the angh girl.
Endavaru vaali veponnu, vaali vepayanukku na suviseshin chollara, ya sabayka kootuvarani, yavunayin kootuvarakudadu.
And no angh girl, and should not call angh boy to the church by telling the gospel to them.
Vittla vaali vepayanga irukkarapu, vittla vaali veponnanga tuition badike pora, na satthiyang kekporan, jaumana porani, yavunanga poogudadu.
And whether angh boys are staying in the house, and you should not go and have a tuition, or to learn something in the house.
Vittla vaali veponnu irukkumbo, enda payanu, om vittla, om akka tangachi vaali vepalanga irukkumbo, yavunayin vidduku kootu vodu, kaapi kudikukuda, kootu vodu.
And when angh girls are in your house, and you should not take the angh boys, your friends to your house, to even take a coffee.
Na solrada karaitan solramga, kaya vaidu oru aliyalaya solanga. Apa ellarun alla padam padchikigana.
And so, I think that all have learned a better lesson.
Idha satthiyang.
And so, this is the truth.
Idha unmayana jiviyathukka astibara.
And this is the foundation for the true life.
Yantavaru ponnu, na annanagarla irukkumbo, yantanaera vandu, yepastra, eh, this boy, indha guy vandu, abdi obidin soli, oru thana kootu vanta.
And so, when I was ministering in Anna Nagar, and one girl brought a boy and turned him unto me.
Alukutha English teriyon.
And she, only she knows English.
This guy, ah, ibi, na sanaj, enna vukkar, enna vishin solle.
And so.
Yavun, ninga suviseshin chollanga, solle.
They tell gospel to him.
Ah, sari, suviseshin cholluvu.
And so, I thought it could tell the person.
Avana vukkandu pesumbo, devana adichu pesura, idichu pesura, naanu pathukiteerunna, sari, yavunukulay, edavu aviy eeriichu.
So, when they were sitting and speaking, and thought that some spirit entered into her.
Then, ah, na transferai poitan.
Then I got transferred from the place.
Thiripi patha, avan, avala, onnumlamakiita.
And so, then after, for few days, I saw that, and she spoiled him.
Suicide ikondi nikira.
And now, she was coming to the point of suicide.
Madharye gantavara.
And she came to madharye to visit me.
Oh, suviseshin chunniaani.
And she cried bitterly, and I said.
Yanteyae vandu, ni suviseshin chollavara, vikira, yavuna kooduvara.
And you're calling me, unto me, and to tell the gospel to him.
Idhe konavattatla, ni satthiyan soli, kandavu yin kunduvara.
At the same konavatam, you are bringing many of them to bring the gospel to them.
Satthiyan thimpari mari, ni nyanasana adukachiruka, pona nyanasana.
And so, they have taken, asked them together, what is your baptism?
Won jiviyan sariilla, ni innorala kundu vandu, nyanasana thukunduvaraya?
And your life is not perfect, you're calling the other to take baptism.
Na, pesaramchana, na bangarama pesuvu, satthiyathani karakta purunjikittu jiviganu.
And you have to understand the truth well, and you must live.
Athuma adha engaradu, karakta rootla boonuva.
And saving the souls, you must go in the right roots.
Onakkui oru, pesaramchanda onne, yavula athuma adha amantraani.
And so, when one starts to speak, and you are going to gain the soul.
Na thirumalisalayirukkumbo, deva.
And so, when I was thirumalisay.
Oru palayavishvasi.
And was a whole believer.
Suviseshin chollara, athmakalachu, avan na, andamansha na, alla mansha, alla thirukadrisi, satthiyan chollaran, satthiyan chollaran, choldu, moonu kalyanagadiita.
And he was a good believer.
Final muddivennade, nitthi jivan poivutadu.
And he was a good believer, he used to at a prophecy, but he got remarried, and said at last, and he lost his eternal life.
Track onneruke.
And there was one track.
Indha trackani taanta kudadu.
And you should not cross this track.
Karakta boonu.
And you must rightly move on.
Abdi, ni patha marrenna, avianor onakkulay, sensar adipar.
And so, when you go out of the path, and the spirit of God will give you sense.
Yenmahanen soluvu.
And he call you my sin.
Akkaramangal oru kaathu.
And the iniquity is a wind.
Paavu oru kaathu.
And the sin is a wind.
Onakkusensa raadigana, adhodan, no uliyathu ni vittunu.
And sin, sir, must be taken within that, and you must lose your ministry.
Enna illa, bhakti illa, adu devikam illa, adu oru kani, sonna, ni adu, adu oru uliyam alla, ni veliyavundru.
And if the Lord says, this is not for your education, and for your godliness, it's not your ministry, you must come out of that path.
Apostol narabidila, ninga padchubaranga.
When you look into acts of the apostle.
Orunal powul, asiavukku pogumbidiaga, prayanthanampaninana.
And so, one day, and Paul determined to go to Asia.
Avan asiavukku pogumbidi, avan payatanampaninabodu.
And so, when he determined to go to Asia.
Apostoler padinavara, arla idhu solapputukaradu.
In sixteen six, it is said, in Acts of the apostle.
Ah, avan prigia kalatia naadukale kadandu boonabodu, asiavile vasanathicholladabodikku, parisutthaviinal thadaypannapattan, yabri.
And so, when he gone to the frigia and the region of Galatia, and he was forbidden by the Holy Spirit.
Vasanathu cholladu thappa.
And so, what God says is wrong.
Solanga, vasanathu cholladu thappa.
And what is in the word of God is wrong.
Ana avianavar solrara, ni ipa soladansolrara.
But the spirit of God forbidden him not to see.
Avan parisutthaviinala vasanathicholladabodi, thadaypannapattan.
And he was forbidden by the Holy Spirit to preach the word in Asia.
Poranai pesama erindha.
And really what has happened.
Adutnal misia desathukupondu.
And then after, and he crossed to the Messiah.
Pitiniya naadukupohu prayanthanampanina.
And then he asaid to go to Pitiniya.
Adutvasanampadchubara, avianavaro, avani pohu viddavillai.
And the spirit of God suffered them not to go.
Pesama vukkandu jabikaramchta.
And he started to sit and pray.
Onbadavasanathal, avanukku oru darushanam kada.
In ninth verse, and he got a vision.
Alala, naan chunnal, satthiyam, ulukku oru le purunjirukadu, suviseshin chollade, vijabathukupohade, odipoyuvudanone, indhal, yadakamudaka, pesura, abdi nila, vasanathu oru da nam pesura.
And so, with the word of God, I'm speaking, you should not think, I'm speaking so contrarily.
Won jiviyan ketupunabara, thiripi enna eerya prayer.
After your life was corrected, then after, how you can conduct eerya prayers?
Ni sariilla, thiripi enna athma rachipu.
And when you are not right, and how you can save the souls?
Ni konappatta pinbe.
And so, after you are converted.
Ni konappatta pinbe, unsa godarani nisayee, stirappadutte.
And after you are converted, and establish your brother.
Ni nila, adukparu, oru thana tukeyedu.
You first stand still, and you can see others to come up.
Indha marka, vidyasamana marka.
And this religion is entirely different.
Pasakacy vargisunnu, oru periyapastar undara, ungalakallarka teriyala.
And there was a great pastor, Pastor Casey Vargas.
Avanga sister.
And his sister.
Avanga vandu, ah, neechal veeranganai.
And she was a fool, and good swimming.
Nalla swimming soli vudba.
And she used to teach a good swimming to others.
Avanga soli kuduthi, yavu veru famasa irukka.
And many become famous, and by her teaching.
Orunal, oru pillaki, avanga soli kudutha.
And one day, she taught her, a girl.
Konja aalathal poisoli kudutha.
And she taught her going into a deep.
Yivungabangarama swimmingla, yivung vandu, remba famasanale.
And she was a famous in swimming.
Ana ipo aalathal poi, andapillaki soli kudutha, bodu.
And when she took the child to her place.
And she stumbled in her path. Adanal, adu bayattal, tanni kudi karamsa onne, yivungala vandu, oru avishathu katti pudiichu.
And so, because of the fear, and shudra, water, and sipai, and the spirit.
Yivunga yavulavukatara, enni vuttre, ni na onneya pudiichikara.
And she shouted, and leave me, and I hug you.
Enni kai kala, asaya viddu, nusolrada.
And make my hands and legs to move.
Tanni kulay, yaragakara.
And who is asan?
Andapillaki maranabaya.
And she's having the fear to.
Yabriyadu, yavunga kaapathiravangalune, pudiichu, ilithu, pudiichu, pudiila, renduveri, jiva, pudiichu, pudiila, yavungalukka, kaya asaykala, kaala asayla, apriyavu, rendu sethey.
And so, when the health tightly, and she was not able to move hands and legs, and they both were died in the spot.
Na solrada, ulukku satthiyam purunjida?
Can you understand the truth that I'm telling?
Ni sariyaranada, na, ni matthana kaapathamudiyon.
So, only when you are right, and you can rescue others.
Akkaramam oru kaathu.
Iniquity is a wind.
Paavu oru kaathu.
And sin is a wind.
Indha kaathu, appapavisikittu.
And so, the wind may often towards you.
Ni nanikar, aruvu vaise, indha paavu porattai irukkadanu.
And you may think that at the age of sixty, you will not have the struggle over the sin.
Saagaravarek, indha bangaramana porattai irundukittu.
Until the point of your death, and you will have the struggle towards the sin.
Yesaya.
Isaiah.
Naapati onne.
Forty one.
Girvati onbadu.
Verse twenty nine.
Yesaya, naapati ondre, girvathumbo, le, enna solapputukaradu?
Forty one, twenty nine, Isaiah, what it says?
Idho, avergal ellaru, mayay, avergal kiriayigal virudha, avergaludi vikrakangal kaathu, vermayundani.
Avarudi vikrakangal kaathu.
And the idols are more than images of wind.
Alaladu, pisasupichu, tamalakal, enna soluvu?
And so, when they were demon passes, and what used to call?
Solanga. Pisasupichu, andakramatlal, enna soluvu? Payi bridge, klanjolamata, adu shami acha, alal, enna soluvu? Edav kaathu karupu abrima.
And so.
Edenna kaathu, adha vikrakha.
And so, they may call as a wind, and that is an idol.
Vikrakam oru kaathu.
And so, this idol or image is a wind.
Indha avigel, onnadiyavartela kildpadiyino.
And these spirits must obey to your words.
Paavathani pohnjunapoydoo.
When you see the sin to flee, it will flee away.
Ande ennangala, ni eduthu nikkanu.
And you have to resist those means.
Abdi da bible cholligara.
That's what the bible says.
Patthakorinthi, la patthamadiyara, enna soligara?
In Corinthians, chapter ten, what it says.
Kristavay aariyara, aariyukku virudamay elumbukara, ellam etimiyana ennangala yum, naangal, sirai podutthu.
And so, we put under our subjection, and is working again to the excellency of Christ.
Namudaya porayidangal, maamsathukurivigal, alla, arangalay nirmulamakka takka deva balamulavegai.
And for the weapons of our warfare are not carnal, but mighty through God to pulling down the strongholds.
Pisasavikrakathani eduthu nikkanu.
And you have to resist the idols.
On vittukuradama.
Against your house.
On tholilukuradama.
Against your business.
On kudumbathukuradama.
And against your family.
Aikathukuradama.
And against your union.
Sugathukuradama.
Against your healing.
Asiduvaathukuradama.
And against your blessings.
Samadhanathukuradama.
And against your peace.
Ibridila, pala vikrakangal poradu.
And many idols may work against you.
Oboruporattathukupinnala, oru sakthi irukku.
And behind every problem, and struggles, and there is a power.
Oboruvallamikupinnala, oru vikrakarukku.
And behind any power, and there is an idol.
Oboruthingulukupinnala, oru sarpo irukku.
And behind every evil, and there is a serpent.
Na ungalukku chollirupan nanikar.
I would have told you.
Yaamugala, ah, Venkangi, no, oru adukka, namdaya, Trivandran local.
At Trivandran local, there is a place called Venkangi.
Anda sabayla ellarukulay, oru kurikapattan nara, thala, sanda vandrichu, sabayay, kolambi poichu.
And particular point of time, and there was a great confusion in the church.
Churchle ellarame kolambi pitanga.
And all were confused with the church.
Pinmatto.
And backsliding.
Yavungalukulay group.
And there was a group of sin.
Adu chief pastor, oru kipitichu.
And it went till the chief pastor.
Anda sabayay kolambi, onnila, poi, andabuguliakarangal, allati maatiachu.
And the church was totally confused, and they shifted or transferred the servants of God.
Purusa oru pastor kunduvariki.
And they appointed a new pastor.
Avarko janaale jabikiramansha.
And he was a good prayer warrior.
Nalla ubavasa, jabi karamansha.
And he took fasting, and used to pray well.
Ipovu central, center pastor, assistant pastor, avarukaradu.
And now, he in a center, and he was a sent pastor, assistant pastor.
Avara anga poi, vukkandu, dey, nilichavu.
And he sat in the place, and he prayed regularly.
Avor orunal solrara.
And one day, he said.
Orunal, yana kusopanav.
And there was a dream to me.
Hallla, na nikir.
I was standing in a hall.
Enga janangalal, allam, paduthukadakara.
And all the people were laying down.
Apo, oru periyasarpo, abri sabayla elumbudu.
And there was a great dragon, and it rose at the church.
Bangaramana oru sarpo.
And it was a great dragon.
Yaavalkala pakkaadu.
And I've never seen in my life.
Ana, adha abriye, veliyavaru.
And it came out.
Adhu veliyavara vara, adhu sudhiirku, varunga, odambu, abri onno onna, avsolrara, sarra, 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 nusoundu varudhu, abriyeduthittu, adhu, faith, onda gate, varikirukku, onda, onda churchnu dekate, adhu duro, poynasiidu, nerapoi, main roadla thirimbi, poikittu irukku, adhu poradu, na pakkara, ana body engarukku, the round, indhi da irukku.
And it was coiled and achieved, and so, it started to move little bit, and so, it crossed near the main road, still, the body in the house.
Naal kilometer, talley, Kolankoodu, shathra, oru, oru temple irukku.
And after four kilometers, and there was a temple at Kolankoodi.
Kolankoodu.
Kolankood.
Ande adathukka, ande sarpo, thala, engabodu, avsolrara, anga, ande churchikku, ande templekula, adu thalaivakekmo, uruguda, engnerukku, adhanode, bodyla sudukkal, engarukku, indha churchikula vukkandu.
And when it places its head in the temple, and still, and the coils of the body was still in the faith home.
Kadesi, idhu, churchevu, te veliyavpochu.
And finally.
Anneye, neekorikandu, churchle, enna kadeyadu, prachinayel.
And finally, it moves out of the church, and from that day onwards, there was no problem in the church.
On vittlandu sarpo sudhi vukkandukantpar.
And check whether the serpent was found in your house.
On uliyathulay, idhu ullo vukkandukantpar.
And check whether it is found in your ministry.
On business central, idhu vandu ullo vukkandukantpar.
And check whether it is staying in your business center.
Adukalambunonik.
And it should depart.
Kaathu, kadalum, kildpadihara.
The winds and the sea obeys to him.
Ni, neeku, koota, mudiyamodu, oru command kudugano.
At the end of the meeting, you should give a command.
Ah, kaathapathani, katleadano.
And you must command, looking unto the swings.
Adattano.
And you must rebuke it.
Pisasapathani, baybada kudadu.
You should not fear looking unto the devil.
Oru, pisas, doruthana, nam poaveelya.
And one was casting of the demon, he not leave.
Time aidsi, enna pandrana, ungal thirle, enna, idhu poitole, matakadu.
And time is up, and you're saying that you're not moving, and what to do further?
Please, poidun, solana.
And it said that, please, you move away.
Yara, yara, bade.
And looking unto who is said.
Please, poidun, na, adu, please, ne paru, bohuma, ade. Ni adu edutha, adattanu, kaathai pathi, esen, sunare, adattinar, adhodadu, appri, afai push.
And looking unto the wind, and he rebuked it, and so, he, but was completely, was off down.
Na sariyana, yesuvin naamathal, ni indha vittavittu, veliyavpogumidi, kaataladigaran, solamun.
In the name of Jesus Nazareth, and ask you to come out of this house, you must command the spirits.
Mark onbadi, girvathijil, esen, sunare.
And what Jesus said in Mark, chapter nine, verse twenty five.
Umayum sevidumana aviyeh, ivanayvittu, porapputtu, poyenre, katleadigara.
And defend up spirit, and you move away from him, he commanded the spirits.
Next command kudugara.
And he gave the command to him.
Inimel, ivanukul varada, yenre, onakkukatleadigara.
And also, he gave a command, and should not come further unto him.
Inneki, indha prasangathodu, onkudumbathala, vittla irukkara, ana, indha kaathu, indha vikrakam, veliyavono, ini saagaravarek, idhu ullo varakudal.
And so, within this message, and after hearing this message, and this wind, or this iniquity, should not come into the, until the death, it should not come into you.
Mark onbadi, girvathijji.
Nine twenty five of Mark.
Appuludhe janangal kootamay, odi varigirudhe, esu kandu, andha asutthavaviinooki, umayum sevidumana aviyeh, ivanayvittu, porapputtu, po, ini ivanukal pogade, indhi, naan unakkakatleadigara.
And so, I command thee, or charge thee.
On pillakulay, on purushanukulay, on manaviukulay, on vittukulay, uliyathukulay, engyadu, indha sarpo irukku, indha polada, aviyirukkun, sonna, indha vikrakathani, eduthu poradi, veliyavpon, solanu, thiripi, ullo varadan, ni solle.
And if the serpent or spirit is found in your family, among your children, your wife or husband, and you must charge it out, it should not come, and no more enter into your house.
Kildpadiyama?
And will it obey?
Ni devanukku kildpadiyaj, katayidu kildpadiyam.
And when it obey God, and it will obey into you.
Idha, idha, basic satthiyam.
And this is the basic accusation.
Basic truth, idha.
And this is the basic truth.
Ni kildpadiyalan, ni devanukku kildpadiyalan.
And when you obey not to God, and do not obey you.
Ni chidu kildpadiyam.
And so, surely, it will obey you when you obey to God.
Jeremi, ayimpati, onno onne, enna soligara?
So, fifty three one of Jeremiah, what it says.
Babilonai alikkum kaathu.
And so, the winds that blow on Babylon.
Inneki, alikkira kaathu, kudumbangala, alikkirathukutha, pisasuporadra.
And so, today, and the devil is striving hard to give you sorrows.
Thiridan, thiridavum, kolavum, alikkum, varugrane, andri, vairu ondrukum, varan.
And the thief comes to steal, and to menace, and to destroy, and he comes for nothing.
Indha alikkira vallamay, ni eduthu nikkanu.
And you have to resist the powers that destroy you.
Yoona, nankamadikara, etta vasanathay parkumbo, deva.
When we look onto Jonah, chapter four, verse eight.
Anga, oru usna kaathu, visa, vishinadu.
And so, there came a wind of the beastmen.
Andu usna kaathu, vishna, odan, bangarama veil.
And so, when the come winds of the sun, and there was a great sun beat.
Thirukadrisi, sorundu bonan.
And the prophet was fainted.
Andha kaathu, adichu, konjarangala, avan solra, setitana, alla arukku.
And so, after the wind vehemently blew upon, and said that it is better to die.
Ebridika, adichirukvaranga.
And so, how the wind blow upon him?
Ah, oru periyathirukadrisi.
And so, was a great prophet.
Ivana devan, nambrarare.
And the Lord trusted him.
Ni va thirukasun, chollungrarare.
And he said that you must utter prophecy.
Eva vandanu, odanala, unavidamatakara.
Even he wanted to run away, he was not leaving him.
Kadalakondalikavikarare.
And he made the sin divorce.
Ivana tukey, tanni kulapodraga.
And he made him procasted to the sea.
Mean vaitukullar, ninnive, engi, vandu chanditaa.
And out of the belly of the heaven, it came to ninnive.
Ana ipa thirukasun, start aidichu.
And now, the prophecy was started.
Ana indha oru kaathu, adichu, varunga.
Now, you see, and look unto his.
Indha kaathu, adichu, odan, avan engabidha, enna ga uliyam, enna ga, setanala, arukku, vas, enna vasana?
Suriyen udithu.
Yoona naangue yetta.
Surian uditha podu, devan usnamana keel kattai kattalaita, appo ludhe veil yoona udie thalaile padigaredinale, avan sorundu poi, thanakulli saavi virumbi, naan uyiroodirikarede parkilum, saagaraden alama irukum endra.
Sari, naa oru kailu kaka kuda, katta, weetla vellam prachinabunigaya.
And so I should not ask this question.
Yappamadu, naa setuponana lalarko, neneshonge, arnu keta, adhe, nalakailvita, anari kettittingena, weetla poi, ana, naa anna koduma ponna, ni saavunun nenithai, abrima, indhalamaveli paringi, pudushavangiduva.
So is there any such questions you've asked in your life and it is better for me to die?
Ilapurushan kayavaidita, yanga, naa enanga panna, onulsoorallam, bongipotan, tuni allando, ochukuttha, ninga, adichadala, vangi kitta, tiripenjavu, neneshinga, abrima.
And so if the husband raise the hands and we ask questions, I have given everything for you and why did you raise your hands?
Yappala ninga saavunun virumbriyaga.
And whenever you thought a to bet to to len.
Oni apri marnatin, nelaikun, oni konduvaran, the avi.
And the spirit took you to the coast of the deep.
Onakula soruga undubanugare.
And he made him to faint.
Idha oru usna kattu.
And this is the vehement east wind.
Indha usna kattu vittina, oni kondu, engavutro, suicide ikutalitupero.
And when you leave this east wind to come in your life, it will take you to suicide.
Ah, nalakrisavam, vandususide panamata, enna solon, dhrima, andavare, eni edutukollungal, andavare.
And good Christian will not commit suicide, but he says, take me up, Lord.
Tana suside panna, enga pombiyade, paralavam gadekada, adanalaya, yara kola solva, ninga kondrunga.
And so if he can't.
Karanik kola, ningal pannunga.
And so if he commits suicide and he will know and he will ask him to give a mercy.
Iresuunala eliyavukondadu.
The same situation came to Elijah.
Avan enna suna.
And what he did.
Pothumandavare, naan nalava nalaya, eni edutukollumandavare, abridan suna.
And he said that enough Lord, I am not good and take me up with you.
Avanakal nalathirin, ta suside panna, enga pomata, odana, avalam, virudava poi do.
And you know swell and if he commits suicide and that which has run will go in vain.
Oh, walkela usna kattu viisuda.
And is there vehement beastmen in your life?
Saavi virumbukaralu, oni talitupoda.
And so whether you are desiring to die or speaking to the police.
Yakob one, aru.
James chapter one verse six.
Anga oru kattu adikude.
And there came a wind.
Andha kattu da, nekane, kudumbathala adikude.
And many of the families and such winds are striking in their life.
Kudumbangalukula, in the kattu viisude.
And so in many good families and such winds are striking.
Analu, avan yavala vaagilam sandeegapadamel, visvasathode kettukadaven, sandeegapadigarevan, kattinaal adibuttu.
Enna kattu, sandeegapadigarevan, kattinaal alibadigaran.
He doubted a way breath and he is like a wind that way breath in the sea.
Oh, purushanudaya irudayam, oni nambunun, byvillal, neeti muli, mupathonla, solirukare.
In Proverbs chapter thirty one says that, and your heart of the husband must trust you.
Gonassaliyana stree, awalde purushanudaya irudayenasi ma, nambum.
And the virtuous woman and the heart of the husband will believe or trust in her.
Manavi ona nambunu.
And the wife must trust you.
Oh, purusha ona nambunu.
And the husband must believe you.
Oh, pettaru ona nambunu.
And your parents must trust in you.
Anadeenarathla.
But at the same time.
Ni nambikiki trohama arukku kudade.
But you should not be such a fond you the belief.
Ya vittukara, apri la illanga, anapri taikirukare, adham prachinana.
And my husband is not like, but they were staying in the same manner.
Pillengalana, apri valakkalambanga, anapri ta, adu valamdirukkun.
And they used to say, and I did not grow my children this way, but they have grown this way.
Na enewe sachya kontuvara.
And I want to bring me as a testimony.
Na rachikapadukumunala.
Before I got saved.
Bayangarama kattavartabesw, adu apri, and the school apri palakitsi.
And so you used to speak about words and so I practiced in my school.
Adha and the area, apri tambeswaga, adu adu saralamabesw.
And they used to speak in that area and so spontaneously use these words.
Orinala apri pesitara, roadla vich.
And one day in the road I speak these words.
Orna pesitana.
I spoke to a person.
Avan eni varitita.
And he chased me.
Yangu vidan angala ereke.
And my house is there.
Na viddukulapola.
I did not enter to my house.
Naam poi tana, ivan enkelamalapidiyaporan, naam poiyapitana.
And so I ran away from the police.
But avan eni varitita.
And he came after me.
Vidaveela.
And did not leave me.
Sari, ineme, engi pombiyana, onka, oru sudusutina, enga onta, viddukleya onta.
And so further I cannot move anywhere and so I came rounds and came to my house.
Avan ondu, engamata reportpantanga.
And I, he reported to my mother.
Engamata teacher.
My mother was a teacher.
Teacher, onga payya, vandu, enna, ipriya beswa, ipriya juli kuduriginga, enna mari, pesiputan.
And what he taught and what you taught to him and see how.
Na parachikapala, nalakavandikanga, ni rachikapadaparang, juli kudade.
And so I was saying, you should not say that I was not saved.
Emma, nampeesaveyilant.
And I said to her, I did not speak like that.
Anai eni malangal podavichte.
And he asked me to stay on this.
Amata solranga, ya pillayepati, anakutariyunnaga.
And my mother.
Yosikira, malangal podi, epa, ivala periyanambikia, nama, nishirav, nambikia trohia, pasanadala, naantha, naantha, kattavartabesna, chandailathuthu, naantha, avanakattavartal, bayangarama besna, adanalaga, kovathal, eni varitita, ipa, ipanai, solitai, ilave, ilan, engamata, addichu besranga, ey, ya pillayepati, anakutariyo, pessaveyamatan.
And my mother.
Kuda yosikira, naan, unmayavi, nampasanadu unma, idhemaradu, badi pillengi, engukanduruku.
So my.
Kakkaki, tanbunji, enna de. Huh? Adu kaka, than karpa, than arukko, adhe, enga ponna ereke, adhi, erukkara, onta, pudiyitto, odiitereke, anega, pillakal, ipri da, pandrathal, la, saida, anav, parents, ya pill, ayio, yokia, vanathal, neepana, arigavandu, naan, newa, readymada, arigirkamanga.
And many children are illegal and they were found like this but still and they support their own children and they were not in their own ways.
Sandeegao.
And doubting.
Adu oru kattu.
And that is the wind.
Indha kattu viisunathana, anega, visvasigal, ko, visvasathala, illa.
And so because of this wind strikes and there were many believers and are not informed.
Andha kattu, allavandrichina, yahari, menige, paga, sandeegathala, papige.
And so when the wind attacks you and you will see everyone with doubt.
Ah, ni velike pove, angarun, viddukodiyundruva.
And so you will go for a job and you will come back to your house.
Viddukvona marukundriti, ninga ondunipaa, payya, school, vasilapayinipaa.
And so after coming house and you will go.
Sandeegavallavandricha, idhu oru kattu.
And doubts enter your life and so this is a wind.
Ebasiya naangka, patinanka, parkumbuladu.
When we look onto four, fourteen of officiates.
Adhe, enna kattu.
And what is that wind?
Tandara podagam oru kattu.
And so and there are doctrines and that is the wind.
Thuru badesam oru kattu.
And the false doctrine is a wind.
Inne kya, byvillal, oru, byvillal, allarame, vichirukaro, anav, overthu, overdiseenla, prasangamatra.
And so all are having the same bible but they are differently, then, when they are preaching.
Vetrumiyanu obadesangal.
And so the variableness of the doctrines.
Obadesangal.
And that is the doctrine of devils.
Tandaramana obadesangal.
And so there will surrains.
Indha tandrangara, vedu, adiyahama, moonu, ondla, ulavarde.
And so the captainess or deceiving doctor comes in Genesis chapter one.
Enkara, varthu, adiyahama, moonle, ulavarde, sarpa manade, megavun, tandaramula, da, irundade.
And so and the serpent, it was so simple.
Devan, indha kanigalil, yadiyavu, onurai, pusikke, vendam, endru, chunnadu, unda.
And as the Lord told you and should not speak anything of this fruit.
Ningalidhe, pusikum, nalil, devanai, pola, maarvirgal, endru, devan, hariva.
And the Lord knows when you eat this and he shall become gods.
Appriyau, alagana, oru podagatakuduthu, kautita.
And giving and such a good doctrine and he have reverted then.
Ah, na samivathala, onu, kailu, pata.
And recently I heard a news.
Ipuladu, namchit, nanjabikapokare, nanjabikambuladu, ongeludaya, credit cardila, illavutala, ongeludaya, bank balance, koodukarade, ipuladu, cellil, ongelukku, message oru, mayday, engapa, appa, mailarande, oru, tapakutapakun, indhan, the passwordla, man, mailarande, adicharara, abridana, yoscha.
And so you are telling.
Kailipadongala, kayavaidu, elan, elan, angadukudukuponangiringala, adu vara, anikashna, kila, pichu, ivan jabikira, arindha pastor, jabichavodane, onga, cella, edutuparanga, abridha, oni, cella, edutu, oni, oru, vandusachi, oh, enak, iruthi, tai, timunu, ruva, eeryvittade, abridha, odane, allar, alay, alay, appa, avluvar, garamla, ya, onu, rendu, varukumadiyadi.
And this pastor was praying and telling that and now it be credited your account by twenty eight thousand three hundred and he said it was credited in my car and all shouted, hallelujah, clap their hands.
Ya, oru, patukodi, athondiana, ya, iruthi, tai, timunu, ruva, athrare, avala, dam, balance, avutterka.
And so he can credit by ten crores and why he was earning only twenty eight thousand three hundred.
Satyathapurunjika.
And you must understand the truth.
Indha satya, onak, olaga, prakarama, asivada, tharade, anap, paralavatla, oni kondubohu.
And this truth will not bring you the worldly blessings but it will take you to heaven.
Lalasati, nigapurunjikun, yaamandharaniya.
And you must understand the truth well and you should not be deceived.
Ipavande, christianity, kula, oru, periyav, vanchikara, thanme, ulavandrichina.
Because now there came a deception in christianity.
Esuvin namatil, kurisolapodu, no, board, boardra.
In the name of Jesus and here and they will utter this what seems.
Eppidi vanchikara, kalan, ning, padichuparanga.
And see how the times are deceiving the people.
Ah, overthu, overdiseenla, vichirka.
And so many are keeping the board a different designs.
Orinal, oru, vandu, in the byvillakata, oru, orumanara, in the byvillakudanga, engu, urla, panchayitu, kudiirukun, kata.
And one day he asked for a bible because and they came and had this reference.
Enna, thik, ya, byvillal, erukura, onga, panchayitu.
And so he asked and why you want to have my bible for your cause.
Urla, oru, thirutupoiitsi.
And he said that and there was a different treatment.
Na, arisya, pair, solikite, varua.
And we will continue till the name, one by one.
The byvillanadula, oru, kairi, pota, abri, nool, vichachirupa, ka, ka, yavan, thirunan, soli, and the pair, sona, oni, and the byvilles, grrr, nusutunna, ey, apa, enna, in the water divine, marri, tangava, sutavutana, the byvillasutavutana, na, yoscha. Puridam, ulike, water divine ma, tangava, kailavacha, grrr, nusutto, adavada, unmayarke. Na, sari, idhe, checkponu, nusoliite, na, oru, byvillakudutu, oru, palay, byvillan, ni, enna, dambanu, avan, poiitto, konjanathla, father, kandupristo, byvill, grrr, nusutichina, oh, idhali, oru, technique, oni, kandupristichiginga, ivala, onga, yar, kereyade, orutun, kristavakereyade, pakka, indu, kuppa, meanavu, kuppa.
And they all belong to the slim area of the hills and so they said that to give the bible.
Idha kailipadu, onene, namal, inne, poi, sangalam, byvillasutavada, para. Onnu sutada, adha, unde, visvasa.
That is his faith.
Na, edukisolrana, inne, kyu, obadesan, solitte, vityasama, obadesangal, vandrichi.
And so telling the doctrines and there came a variableness in doctrines.
Janangalukupana venu.
And the people are in need of money.
Ashivavamenu.
And they need a blessings.
Janangalukusukavenu.
The people need a healing.
Ha, abridana, bodu, the courtakalati, abridana, ne, apri, oru, munu, ruva, potunpu, ulandhra, apri, ularani, enakum, poril, naan, adha, pathukatana, idhe, ivan, yar, nasaratali, na, yantavandu, jabichavonache, ivan, kotta, adikara, adikara, parakkudan, soli, naan, nasaratali, irukambodu, ya, meetingla, prasangam, kattukatana.
And when I was.
Ha, abridana, onene, sarra, napu, naan, oru, varu, potunpu, ulandhra.
And when I was Nazareth and he came and attended my meeting but now he removes the coat and four enter are falling down.
Iva, alexache, ipa, purusa, apostle, election, voter, kane, namatana, jabichha, ivanuk, kharu, naanana, jabichha, abridana, yoscha.
And so I thought that and I prayed for him, I prayed for him's car.
Alam, unmayartha, sandosham.
And so if it is true, I am so joyful about it.
Kadisi kaalathla, arputangal, adayalangal, enambu, argal, satyathimel, ulanbu, korayum, idha, antikrisun, udie, oru, aalgai.
At the last time and this is the routing of the Antichrist and they believe upon the miracles and wonders and the, and there was this truth that it is.
Rendadesal, nekela, ningirapakala.
You can read in second Thessalonians.
Rendadesal, nekela, rendamadikara, patimuna, vasanatha, patinora, vasanathay parkumbuladu.
When we look onto second Thessalonians chapter two verse eleven.
Apathilarande, ninga, pakala.
You can read this from ten onwards.
Ketupoguruvuluklay, adina, anidinaal, undakum, sagalavida, vanchagathodum, irukum, rachikapadatakadaai, satyathimel, ulanbu, avargal, angi, area, amal, pona, badiinale, apri, narakku.
And so and with all receivableness of unrighteousness in them they perish because they receive not the love of truth and that they may be saved.
Onbadavasan, enna, soladu.
About the ninth verse.
Andha akkarankarudaya, varugai, satanudaya, sailanbadi, sagala, vallemi, orum, sagala, adayalangal, orum, poyan, arputangal, oru, erangiveru.
Even him who is coming is after the working of the Satan with all powers and signs and lying wonders.
Adathasama, satyate, oru, visvasiamal, visvasiamal.
And next word and they love not the truth.
Anidil, priyappadu, varu.
And they will be, whom, and their unrighteousness.
Kaalangala, uladu, priyamanavu.
And so these are all things that happens in last times.
Tandara podagam.
And so that is the future abundance.
Yoobu, onnu, patthambo, la, parkumbuladu.
When we look onto one nineteen of Job.
Oru kattu, aditthada, and the weetai, odaythada, and the pillakal, anithum, setuponarkal.
And there came a wind and strike the house and the children of the house were dead.
Evera, erum, montra, aarinbadi, veedu, enbadu, nambikayekanbikarade.
According to three six of Hebrews and the house chose the hope.
Chala, kattu, adikambuladu, indha, kristavatin, mele, indha, deviyyatin, mele, irukkara, indha, byvill, mele, irukkara, nambikay, onivittu, veliyapoi do.
When some wind strikes and the prayer, the accounts and the divinity will not prevail.
Azda, remba, kede.
And that is a craft.
Chala, kattu, oru, silara, indha, satyate, utte, veliyakonduvere.
And some winds are taking them out of this truth.
Oru, silara, indha, kattu, kadavala, illanu, solavikide.
And some winds are telling, oh, there is no God.
Napathittham, sangidhe, yala, vasanathay parkumbuladu.
When we look at the song forty eight verse seven.
Keel kattinaal, kapalkal, udakara.
And so because of this wind and he broke the ships.
Chala, kattu, adikambuladu, visvasajivya, odanjubere.
And so when the wind strikes and they lose the life of faith.
Avangalukuparishutam, odanjubere.
And they lose their holiness.
Pradistain, nastamayere.
And the consecration is counted loss.
Na, ipuladu, tirumbacholugare.
And once again I see.
Ah, inne, kathikilpadiyaran, enna, artho.
And what is the meaning for the wind to obey him?
Ondaye, esayam, onakukattupadabanu.
And your shell shall be subjected unto you.
Palay, nalvaran, onakukurade.
And you should not become too bad your old creatures.
Akkaramangal, paavatthi, ni, merkkolavendu.
And you have to overcome the iniquities and sins.
Vikkarangal, onakukilpadiyavendu.
Idles should obey you.
Oni, sorundubohavikara, tharkulay, naavi, lundini, veliyavaravendu.
You must come out of the suicide spirit that make you faint.
Thuru badesangal, lundini, veliyavaravendu.
You must come out of the false doctrines.
Ni, ukanthi, jo, manne, andavare, idhu, sariyata, pa.
You sit at prayer whether it is right or not.
Vasanathinbadu, idhu, correcta, illan, kertupara.
Analyze according to the word of God and see whether it is right or not.
Kattum, kadalum, kilpadiharade.
The winds and obey that sea obeys.
Adenakadal.
And what is that sea?
Kadalukina, oru, naalukvainta, chikramasolugare.
And so I will tell you the fast point for four for sea.
Esaya, ayimpati, yali, iruvadinbadi, parkumbuladu.
When we look onto Isaiah chapter fifty seven verse twenty.
Kondalikara, kadalka.
And it boils to see.
Esaya, patinialu, pani, rendai, parkumbuladu.
Seventeen two of Isaiah.
Adha, thunmarka, jiviyate, kandbikarad.
That shows the life of wickedness.
Idhella, kondalikaradu, edirkaha.
And why these are all boasting.
Inne, onak, oradam, thunmarka, elimbukarad.
And so the wicked is arising against you.
Onak, ediraga, thunmarka, swavangal, elimbukarad.
The wicked creatures are working against you.
Ni, koyilukala, varuva.
You will come to house.
Vasanala, nalapesuva.
And you will speak the word of God.
Ayimbatavasangidha, om, enna, solugare.
What Psalm fifty says.
Ni, en vasanathay, pesa, onak, enna, arukade, irukkare.
And so what worthy you are to take the word of God.
Enidhey, vasanathay, onak, mudukupinai, portu, vittu, ni, enidhey, vasanathay, pesugare, nusolrare.
And he says that and thou cast my words into the back and you speak my words.
Parishutasthalathukupokkavava, irundha, thunmarka, re, contain, and, prasangicholugare.
And the preacher says that and he who have gone to the holy sanctuary have seen you.
Indha kadalukukondalikara, oru, sakthi ereke.
And the sea is having the power to boister.
Adha, thunmarka, jiviyate, kandbikarad.
That shows the life of wickedness.
Neeti muligala, iruvati, moonla, parkumbuladu.
When we look onto twenty three of the Proverbs.
Indha, kudigara, na, pattinga.
And look onto the pronunciations.
Avanuk, eppidi, irukma.
And how he feels.
Kadalil, sayanikaravane, pola, arpala.
And so he will be the one who was written, that is, for the sea.
Adha, idhu, soo, duswaran, illada, jivya.
And so the life without any feelings or things.
Enna, aditha, arkel, enak, enna, illa, solanga, enak, chorana, illa, abridha.
And so they stick me but I was not having any feeling.
Avan, bauti, naadu, roadla, paduthukavanga.
And he will sleep in the mid of the road.
Main roadla, paduthukavu.
And he will sleep in the main road.
Sarayakada, vasilay, paduthukavu.
And even he will go and before the days.
Avanuk, maana, maria, the soo, duswaran, onume, kereyade.
And he will never have any feelings or emotions or anything.
Oh, walkela, kudha, chal, nairangala, ipri, patta, tholvigal, varumbuladu, ni, yatunala, solle, evada, na, ipri, ta, iruppa, indhal, alavardu, ni, vanditte, enna, ni, oru, avi, kuriyakudi, gar.
Even when such failures are coming in your life and when you say that I don't have any feelings that you say to anyone, then you are a spiritual drunkard.
Oh, walkela, kadal, kondalikide.
And your life and the sea is boasting.
Ah, adutumathay, etta, madikara, mupathranada, vasanathay, parkumbuladu.
When we look onto Matthew chapter eight verse thirty two.
Indha, pandrikal, allam, poi, kadalil, vildandade.
All this wine it fell into the sea.
Pin, kalu, patta, pin, setukupora, pinmatthi, jiviyate, than, kandbikarad.
After your cleanse and when you go to the backsliding life it shows that you are going away from him.
Esu, andha, avi, thurathuna.
And Jesus, when he rebuked the spirits.
Inha avi, enga, poiitsi.
And where did spirit went.
Solanga, enga, poiitsi, indha, avi, la, da, enga, poiitsi, panni, kula, poiitsi.
And all this wine it has entered into the spine.
Indha, panni, la, urukal, bohama, enga, poiitsi, la, kadalukal, poiitsi.
And these all swine and ran violently into the sea.
Pollada, avi, unudie, poratate, kandbikarad.
And this shows the struggle of the evil spirit.
Yoan, iruvati, ondla, parkumbuladu.
When we look onto John chapter twenty one.
Yela vasanathala, pinmari, pona, thana, peduruvay, esu, teedugare.
And the lock's hat of the weetir who was backslid.
Tiboria, kadakkara, vandu, vandu, Tiboria, kadakkara, andai, vandu, avanodu, pesugare.
And so he came near the sea of Tiberias and spoken to him.
Ipoo, orutan, solrara.
And now was said unto him.
Karailanikrathu, kattar, abridana.
One who stood on the shore at his lawn.
Avar, kattar, endru, sonna, odane, pedu, enavanna, tabakun, tanila, kushtha.
And when he said it was a lawn and immediately he was cast into the sea.
Yeah.
Why?
Vastaram, illada, puti, na, nirvaniya, matiyarche.
For he was nickled.
Potun, tanikal, ulandtha.
And he cast himself into the sea.
Adu, vare, andha, nirvana, thupati, onak, kavale, illa.
Until now and he was not having feelings about the nakedness.
Anai, ipa, kattar, na, odane, andha, nirvana, avanakondupoi, tanila, ulavachide.
But when he said it was law and it made him to cast himself into the sea.
Kattum, kadalum, kilpadiharade.
The winds and the sea obeyed him.
Onode, walkee, sari padu.
And set right your life.
Ondeswavathu, sari padu.
Set right your character.
Appri, oni, edirkara, vallemigala, inne, keni, kilpada, vandu.
And all the powers that subjecting you must be subjected.
Elar, gangalay, mooduva.
Let us all close our eyes.
Ipuladu, ningal, comment, pandra, oru, time.
Now it is a time for you to give a command.
Esuuk, avi, kilkadindade.
And the spirit obeyed Jesus.
See, daralukum, adu, kilpadiindade.
It obeyed even to the disciples.
Ipni, malangal, podumbodu.
Now when you bend your knees.
Oh, walkela, poradi, kundukkara, kattum, kadalum, esuuk, kilkadindade, pola, onak, kilkadiyavendu.
All the winds and sea that obey, zens, Jesus, it will obey to you too.
Ongeluk, naanga, indha, prasangatimolama, practice tham, kudukaro.
And so through this sermons I am giving you practice.
Ninga, taniyada, ninga, ninga, naango, onga, pinnale, avi, se, veedu, la, varadu, la, ongeluk, inge, practice, kuduthu, enga, nu, pro, indha, vara, mulus, ninga, olagathukul, nalayire.
And we are giving practice and throughout this week you are going to enter into the world.
Adutavara, ni, sukatodu, varno, indha, poratangala, la, nisnichit, varno, jeshit, varno.
And next week and you must overcome all the problems and you must come with healing.
Oru, velan, ni, sikitin, na, na, phone, mallan, na, jabikavava.
If you are entangled in any problems, if you call me, I will pray for you.
Anani, illama, pirakudade.
But at the same time and you should not go with that place.
Kattum, kadalum, kilpadiharade, ivan, yaro.
The winds and sea obey and who is the man.
Avar than esu.
And he is the Lord Jesus Christ.
Indhe, kinni, vasanathay, kettukundukkara, onak, kattum, kadalum, kilpadiyano.
And ye who are hearing the word of God today, the winds and sea should obey.
Elar, malangal, podla.
Let us all bend our knees.
Or, rende, nimesha.
Two minutes.
Na, indha, vasanangala, repeat, pandra.
And let me repeat the words.
Indha, kattu, onakula, viisudin, paru.
And check what wind is blowing in you.
Andha, kattu, esuvin, namatla, jabik, kakkumuladu, kadiindukal.
And rebuke when you are hearing these words and then.
Prasangak, kakkumuladu, onakula, andha, poratangal, clearayano.
And when you are hearing the message and all the problems in you will should depart.
Adhe, enna, kattu.
And what does that wind?
Soyathin avi.
And that is the spirit of self.
Inime, na, soyama, pesamata, kriyasimata, chayalbada, maata, enna, esuvin, namatla, pradistain, panna.
In the name of Jesus consecrate that I will not speak anymore self and I will think no anymore and I will not work according myself.
Soyath, abhishekathana, kattupadutha, muddiyam.
And through anointing we can control yourself.
Etanavir, kapi, asarke.
And how many are having this desire.
Ipina, kooka, muddiyavu, oru, anjin, nimesha, aghala.
And so it may take five minutes to for the immediate.
Five minutes, kula, kattu, kilpadiyano.
But within this five minutes and the wind should obey you.
Paavatthin, vallemegal.
The spirit of light.
East, palay, nelavaran.
And your old creatures.
Vikkaragatin, poratangal.
And the struggles of idols.
Oni, alikku, vallemegala, niye, adatti, kilpada.
The powers that need to destroy you, rebuke and command those spirits and destroy.
Kattai, adatte.
And you, peace, re, anu, say.
Saavi, virumbare.
And don't decide death.
Enai, virukkara, vargal, marnatthi, virumbukarar.
And thee that hate me and love the dead.
Andavara, virukkara, vandha, marnatthi, nesikaran.
And thee that are loving God and they were hating the dead.
Andavara, nesikara, vandha, marnatthi, verrupan, edirpan.
And he that loves God and he will resist and he will cast out the dead.
Nala, obadesangala, padige.
And you must read the good doctrines.
Onde, nambikay, odakara, kattu, edutunile.
And you have to resist the wind that breaks your hope.
Oh, visvasajivita, odakara, vallemi, edutunile.
And this is the power that breaks your faith.
Ni, vaayatiru, solu, bagala.
Can you open your mouth and see this?
Kattapath, adatte.
And look unto the wind and rebuke it.
Onodu, on pillakal, oru, poradi, kara, vallemegala, edutunile.
And rebuke and resist the powers working against you and your children.
Pisas, oratto.
Let the devil flee away.
Yadi, oratto.
Let the sickness run away.
Saava, velagato.
Let the curses be removed.
Oh, walkela, kondalikara, poratangal, nirkato.
Let all the boasting problems be be stopped.
Irayade.
And be known.
Amaydalayre.
Be still.
Amen. Ipaketta, devanade, varthi, ningal, idhani.
Now you analyze and what the word of God you heard in him.
Ama.
Yes, Lord.
Avi, gal, enak, kilkadindadu, unmatha.
It's true that spirit obeyed me.
Anai, ipa, ya, walkela, kattu, viisikit, ruke, kadal, kondalichikit, ruke, naantha, andha, pathila, po, oru, aar, nusolravanga, kayavaitan.
The winds are blowing in my life and the sea is boasting in my life and those who see and lift up your hands.
Na, kayavaitu, solruthu, na, vandu, onukittai, yarla, vaitan, bakkerukla, devan, ni, indha, vasanathukupukudukriyan, oni, kannukipakkar.
And just God is looking unto you or you submitting to these words.
Ipaa, andavara, adatta, poradu, illa.
Now, Lord is not going to rebuke it.
Onak, abhishekavu, la, ona, olagathal, irukkara, vandhi, onakula, irukkara, vandhi, periyavara, vanduvata.
And he that is in the world is greater than he that is in the world is comes in you.
Malangala, ninne, onak, uragamana, kattai, adatte.
Stand on knees and rebuke the winds that is working against you.
Kadalai, parthu, kattalaid.
And look unto the sea and command.
Ni, solla, ago.
And what you say it when we done.
Ni, kattalaid, nirka.
And you command it be fulfilled.
Andavari, alla, vallemi, onak, tarugirar.
The Lord is giving all power to you.
Oh, uliyatukuradama, na, avi, edutunile.
Resist the powers working against your ministry.
Reba, liya, rabha, niyaka, ra, phira, bala, ribi, tha. Oradatal, oru, pisasathorathunabodu.
And one day when they were casting of the demons in a particular place.
Appa, pudusunana.
I was new to the place.
Mudiya, pudiyitto, ni, po, abridin, sol.
And just catching the hair, I used to say, go out.
Adhu, sonadu, ya, mudiya, la, pudiyara, ni, po, sonna, poradu, thana, na, nikiraa.
It said to me and why you hold my hands and if you see, I go.
Mudiya, pudiyitto, thala, la, atra, ni, vittre, ni, po, solle, na, pora.
And why do you shake my head if you say go, I will depart.
Etanavir, ipa, po, jolaboriya.
How many are going to say go now.
Asuttha, avi, edutu, kattalaid.
And resist the evil powers and command.
Avanuk, adi, aarang, kereyade.
And he is not having authority.
Avan, kilpadiyavu.
And he will obey you.
Hey, bela, bakka, ra, bakka, thira, bakka, thira, baniya, esuvin, namatlanala, ovare, pillakal, oradama, vallemegala, sabikaran, edirkaran, pa, esuvin, na, re, thikka, bariyara. Hallelujah. Amen.